Meeting of October 27. My name is Mo Handle. I am the select board chair. We are conducting this meeting consistent with the new guidelines having to do with COVID-19, which allows us to have the remote meeting. This particular meeting will not have public comment. First, we'll confirm confirm that all of the members of the select board are here. Matt Borelli?
Here.
Dan Matthews?
Here.
Marine, Mary Ann Cooley?
Here.
John Bullion?
Here.
And my name is Mo Handle and I am here. Anything stated at this meeting will be a matter of public record and it is being recorded. All supporting meeting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.nedumma.gov unless otherwise noted. The ground rules of this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Every speaker on our agenda will be introduced after they conclude their remark. Each board member will be asked for any comment, questions or motions. The first item on our agenda is the certificate of appreciation for Hillside Gardens. Is Joe Quinnon?
Hillcrest.
On his way in.
Hillcrest Garden.
Joe, welcome.
Joe, can you unmute?
There we go.
Hi, Joe.
Hello.
Are we gonna get to see you?
Are you gonna get to see us? I'm gonna try.
I hope you're in Florida.
No, we're right here.
You're right. Getting cold.
There you are.
Hi, everybody.
My gentlemen, how are you?
Great. How are you?
Good.
We're here in Needham.
Well, we have a certificate of appreciation for Joe Quinnon of Hillcrest Gardens. In recognition of providing outstanding products and service to the town of Needham and its residents for over 38 years. A silent supporter to the town, you have aesthetically enhanced countless events and celebrations. We thank you for your contributions to the community and wish you success, good health and happiness in your next phase of life. And I would like to ask for a motion to make this proclamation or soon to get official.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Matthews. I'll call on you, Dan. Don't worry. Mr. Matthews.
In your town all these years and you've been a great friend and a good neighbor. So sorry to see you go, but good luck.
So that's a yes vote, Matt. Dan?
Yes.
Will be.
I thought we would come to the comments after the vote.
Sure. Yes.
Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. And before we go to the comments from the board members, all of whom know you guys well, I would also note that Hillside Gardens as a parting gift to the town contributed approximately $20,000 to the town for beautification. And we are very, very grateful. That will be accepted as part of our consent agenda this evening. Now we will go to the board for comments. Dan?
Well, I've already, I guess, yeah, I'm from-
That was far too short for you. You have to say something.
I'm just about, well, say something first and then vote. But I guess we can do it the other way, too. No, it's been great having you guys. And Joe, you've been, you've just been such a great participant and supporter and every other thing. I just, it is, it's sad to see you go. I guess so. I just want to say thank you for everything and all.
Thank you, Dan.
And I want to apologize for saying Hillside as opposed to Hillcrest Gardens all these years. I always get those two names mixed up, but not the activity. I'm sorry, Joe.
No worries.
Matt?
Sure. And again, you know, neat to see you leave, but thank you so much for everything you've done for the town. I remember going to the Book of Gold and deed award for you, which you rightly deserved and hearing all the stories and just terrific things everyone has to say about you and serving on the committee for the fallen brave. That meant a lot of how you brought your education and what we should plant and what the landscaping should be and just a true volunteer. So thank you and enjoy Florida. I hope that's the next destination on the Keys, but just stay well and again, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
John?
Thank you, Joe. Rob, so sorry to see you go. You know, it's this time of year that, you know, that, you know, Hillcrest Gardens always, you know, you always wind down for the season, you go south for the winter. And, you know, we all drive by. I drive by there regularly, day in, day out. And, you know, longingly look and wait for spring. And then when spring comes, you're back and the, the whole yard, the whole property is in bloom and we're all gonna miss that. And, you know, you've done work with Janet and I at our house and, you know, very much appreciated. You've done beautiful work everywhere in town. So congratulations and good luck and we're gonna miss you.
Miss you too and thank you.
Maria?
I was gonna say, it breaks my heart every time I, I drive by, but I know you have good things ahead and I know I have pieces of you all over my yard that will remind me of you. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
And I want to thank you too, Joe. And I, among all of us, I don't know if other people have spoken to you while you've been on your boat. But I have, because I call you every February to order 1,000 pansies for the historical society, which you get for us and then deliver and arrange so they look nice. And I don't know how we're ever gonna continue that tradition without your incredible support. Thank you so much for everything you've done for this town. And I know it wasn't easy when you got started. You had to, to fight to be where you are. And we're very grateful for your presence and you'll be long remembered here. Kate, do you want to say something? Cause you've known Joe a long time, too.
Um, it's so hard to find the words, Mr. Chair, but other than our incredibly dedicated Public Works employees, there's nobody who cares more about the parks and grounds of the town. And Joey Quinnon, and I can't imagine it without you, but you've left such a great legacy for us to follow and we're so grateful for you, John.
Thanks, Kate. And I know Sandy has always had an interaction with you over the years and been very helpful and supported by you. So I'd like to offer her a chance to say something.
I just wanted to thank you once again that we've done every event, Joe. I couldn't imagine doing an event without calling you. And it's just been such a pleasure. And every time I went into you, I just get a big smile on my face. You're, you're just a class act and I so enjoyed working with you. You really are an amazing man and I'm so happy for you and Rob. Your adventure sounds so fantastic. I'm very happy for you both. And Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm gonna put Ed Olson on the spot because I know Ed has worked with you for such a long time. And he is also on, on the call. And if you would, I'd like to just let him say a thing.
Please bring him in, Sandy.
Okay, great. Sorry, Ed. He doesn't know anything about this.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Hi. Boy, I would have prepared a statement, Sandy, if I was gonna be put on the spot, but again, I reiterate what was said, Joe. I've worked for the town 10 years and you've made my career so special. Working with you and Rob and all the things that we've done around town. Matt brought up the fallen brave, but Greensfield, everywhere that we've worked together, most recently doing some improvements at Memorial Park. And I'll just, I'll miss you. Our stories, just talking to you guys. And driving by Hillcrest, like was mentioned, it's just, you'd see it go barren in the wintertime. We all just anxiously awaited you guys coming back in the spring, seeing the decorations. I mean, really, not only you're an incredible person, but you're an incredible talent in what you did here and how you just decorated that property. It was like a magical place that many of us just found solace walking through the yard there and looking at the beautiful plants. But you guys are amazing. I know I'm gonna see you in the future, so I'm not gonna say goodbye because I'm gonna be on that boat someday with you guys and and thank you so much. I'm gonna miss you. Miss you both. Thank you for letting me speak.
Who do you want to say anything?
Me?
Yeah.
Yes. So first of all, you guys, we're so grateful, Rob and I, for the incredible affection and kindness and love that you have shown us. You know, I've said this before and I know other communities are probably great places to live and be. But this community has been just, I couldn't have imagined being more embraced by so much kindness, support and love as this town has shown. And it's been an absolute privilege to work with the professionals who work for the town, with the town and with you guys, you know, Kate, Sandy, Ed, all the guys. Just an example was when Rob and I had the privilege of getting involved in this last part where we donated the plants. You should have seen the town workers. They acted like it was Christmas and we were Santa Claus. They were so excited to receive on behalf of the town these gifts, as though they took ownership of their jobs and of their position in the town. Every single one of them. And it was such a privilege, again, to work with those people in that, in that moment, as it always has been. And, you know, we, we've loved every minute of everything we've done here. And you'll forever be in our hearts wherever we go. And do know, this is a big adventure that we're undertaking and we'd love to meet any of you anywhere or have you for a sale anytime as we sail around the world.
Thank you, Joe. And if we were all in the same room, we would stand up and give you a round of applause, but we'll just do it sitting at our seats here.
For you.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Rob. Very nice. All the best of luck.
Best to you.
Take care.
All right. I just gotta get him up. Sorry. Hold on.
Good.
Chairman?
Getting there. Getting there. Hold on. There we go. And there goes Eddie.
Um, John?
I'd like to move the appointments on the consent agenda.
Good timing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Coming to the vote, Dan Matthews?
Yes.
Matt Borelli?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes, that's unanimous. And with that, we accept that wonderful gift from Hillcrest Gardens, not Hillside Gardens. Thank you. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the uncontrollable dog hearing, which is to be canceled due to the unfortunate change of circumstances. The dog involved has passed on. So we will not be having that hearing. The next item on our agenda is a rail trail mural project and Sarah Shine, Director of Youth and Family Services, is going to be giving us a presentation. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. And thank you so much for having me.
Oh, thank you. And you have a presentation for us. So the floor is yours.
I do. Great. All right. Yay. Is it working?
Yes.
Okay. So we had a couple of things that we wanted to address in this. I received a call from a resident, it's been a couple of months now, complaining that there was some not so nice graffiti on a fence on the rail trail. So that got us to look a little further into it and do some brainstorming. We also know that right now there are so many mental health needs in the area, so much social isolation. And we're really just trying to bring some positivity to Needham. So we tried to merge those two things and we came up with this proposal. So here's the fence that we found the need and the resident that cared so much to reach out to me a couple of times also has put up trash bag for the trash and has tried to do all these things to clean up the area, but the graffiti is one thing that he didn't really have very much control over. So this is our proposal on fixing it. So our proposal, we were working with an expressive art therapist who's actually on our staff. And she has created a little bit of an outline of what we would like to include. And what we'll do is we're gonna get the community involved in creating a huge mural on that fence. And what we're hoping is to have an initial beginning of it and then maybe it can continue over the years, depending on the involvement of the community and how much interest that people have. And what we would do is we would, you know, Needham unites or getting Needham together in some way. We really want it present in the, in the mural. And then also we were thinking that because there's so much graffiti on it, how can we get the youth involved in creating a little positive graffiti and continuing that on? So that we're hoping that it'll less likely to be tagged and destroyed if we can get the youth that are involved to help with the creation. So this is the beginning of the design. All of the, the shapes on the side will have painter's tape around it. So what we'll do is we'll have the community and we'll work really closely with the health department on this in getting people to sign up and paint in a socially distanced way. And we'll make sure we clean everything and that everyone is masked up and that everything is done so that people feel safe about it. But they'll have painter's tape around certain things, will have certain outlines that people can paint and come in. So this will be the first piece of the mural. And again, not any of this is necessarily set in stone, but we were thinking of some positive messages that we could, we could create within the mural and something that when people go back to, it can kind of resonate with them. Again, a lot of positivity, a lot of outline in this area so that people, you know, cause even if you're not artistic, I'm the most unartistic person out there. But I've done projects with Meg Carlton before and they've all been really successful. Because she does it in a way that anyone can really participate. And then here's the graffiti section that we're proposing and it'll have like a little mouse here or some kind of animal that just has your art here. And I'm aging myself a little bit, but you know, we were thinking of what kind of symbol that we could kind of have a repetitive design, you know, like a peace symbol or hearts or, I know peace symbols are kind of out. So we're really gonna work with the youth and like, what kind of symbol is popular now that really kind of shows unity or resilience in a way that people could spray paint and have a design there? And then putting it all together on the fence, it would be, look something like this. And these are just some other designs that this expressive art therapist has done. This is a mural that I actually worked with her on at a program that we worked out together. Just so that you know, she does have a lot of artistic talent, cause you don't know her. And this is a spray painting mural that she's done in the past as well. And this was a dental office that she did murals on their walls. And that's it.
Wonderful. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments? Marion, and then Matt.
I just wanted to say thank you for spearheading this, cause I think it will be an improvement to what's out there and I like the message that you put together. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And we're really hoping to, you know, to start with this fence, but you, we've talked about other areas in Needham, they're targeted graffiti and we could really continue this and kind of brighten up spaces that might be hit with some negative energy.
Thank you. Matt?
And thank you. And I think it's great to spearhead and it's nice to put something and I've been by there to actually put something colorful and meaningful. I think that's terrific. Question as far as getting input from the community or students, what's the timeline or how can people give some input? And when you say put art here, is that gonna be just one thing or is that gonna be something that people can add to? Just cause I wouldn't want it to get divisive if people can write whatever they want. Or is it just gonna be like one thing that you put in that place, kind of TBD?
Yeah, we're gonna help them create it. So that, that placeholder was for us to be able to work with them on exactly what there does. We want, we want their input because they're the graffiti artists on what should go there. And then we're gonna help direct that.
Okay.
The timeline, we're hoping to do this pretty quickly because we're running against colder weather. So we're hoping to get it started in the next couple of weeks or so. And I think like we can do sections of it while we're also getting groups of students together to talk about what the design could entail.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Anyone else have any questions or comments? I think it's a great idea. I saw the graffiti about a month ago. I thought I was looking at the New York subway for a minute. I think this will be a nice thing.
Yeah, we're really excited about it.
Thank you. This is an action item. Is there a motion?
John Bullion? I would move that the select board approve the mural project as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion, which has been made and seconded? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Dan Matthews?
Yeah.
Matt Borelli?
Yes.
Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
The chair votes, yes. That's unanimous. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
To seeing the result.
Great. Thank you so much.
Chair, could I just point out that the board does have a goal about implementing public art in appropriate locations? So this is a great addition to that goal.
Oh, great.
It's certainly appropriate. So that's true and that's great. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is a presentation from lived experience, the lived experiences project, which has done a lot of work compiling anecdotal information and they're going to tell us about it. And I'd like to welcome Anna Geraldo Kerr and Nicole Argo Ben Itzak. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. You may have the floor. So you can, we'd be happy to hear what you've discovered and get into a little discussion about it.
Great.
Excellent. Okay. So then I will share my screen. And make it presentable to you.
That's good.
We're at the conclusion already. Great.
Yeah, that's right. Did you get that? Okay. Good evening. It's an honor to be here tonight and we'd like to thank the select board for inviting us to present and for investing in efforts generally to examine encounter racism and identity-based discrimination in Needham. My name is Nicole Argo Ben Itzak and I am one of the co-founders of the lived experiences project. I moved to Needham with my husband and two children nearly three years ago and my doctorate is in social psychology. My research and work have long focused on social identity, intergroup conflict and conflict resolution.
And good evening. Again, my name is Anna Geraldo Kerr and I am a 20-year Needham resident. My family of nine moved here, I remember this in June 2000. And I'm a small business owner. I'm a community leader involved in several local organizations. And I'm the other co-founder for the lived experiences project. We're really excited to share the findings and have a discussion with you. So as we start, you know, you have the report. You've seen the findings, which we're gonna discuss in the next few minutes. But there may be a question in how and why the lived experiences project started. And this is a clip of a very lengthy Facebook post, you know, we can, we'll say credit Facebook for this one, of a Needham resident that at the time was sharing his, some incidents that had happened to him and his family over the course of the three years that he, his family lived in Needham. He, this was his last email or Facebook post prior to leaving town. They only stayed here for three years and they were leaving town because they were afraid for their safety. The comments were, were in the hundreds, as you can see at the bottom of the screen, there's 700, actually reached over 1,000 likes and reactions and hundreds of comments. And the interaction, the discussion was really polarizing. Some people were empathetic and some people were actually discounting the events and others were sharing their own stories. So when I saw this, I said, something needs to be done here. There's more to this. And there were more stories that started to surface. And that's when I was able to reach out to Nicole and we decided to start documenting these stories. Kind of like how we, we, that was like the genesis and led us to 93 stories by 80 participants in about, in a two-month period. Think we can go to the next slide? So here we, you know, as a survey, we decided to, how can we do this in a way that is quick and efficient? Granted that, you know, given the fact actually that this is all volunteer work. Just wanted to highlight that part. And so we say, how do we collect information? People are busy. We want to create a safe space for them. So I needed to be anonymous. We wanted to focus on the, the five whys. What, when, who, why? And where? And also ask them about some self-reflective questions. How did it feel? How did anything change for you or what would have been the change that you would have liked to see? You know, in Needham, how it did affect you and so on. And also then we decided to be able to, to promote this via social media and try to target certain communities online. And the period was between the beginning of July and the end of August.
So before we took the survey live, we had it reviewed by a committee of transdisciplinary and diverse local social scientists and professionals. And after seven weeks of data collection, lived experiences data included 50 stories. Meanwhile, a school alumni survey was taking place at the same time and there was significant overlap in the story collection. So we merged their data with ours. And that is what we are presenting on here. It's a total of 93 stories. I just want to emphasize before we go on that the sample we are reporting on is not representative of Needham's marginalized communities, nor is it representative of the town as a whole. So this was a convenient sample that happened in seven weeks just via social media. And that means that anybody who felt comfortable immediately participating did so, but there's a lot of people we didn't reach and it may barely scratch the surface. Okay. So now we'll share aggregate data peppered by some of the stories. Note that we're gonna move pretty quickly, mostly highlighting main themes. But there is a detailed report if you're interested in going deeper into it. Before we jump in, I want to recommend that we all employ a specific skill. And that is listening to understand. So to the best of your ability, try not to listen to solve or listen to evaluate. Those faculties are going to be invited in later. They're critical and we use them all the time. But what we find, what, what my team at work finds in our workshops is that it is useful to just listen and actively try to imagine stories from the perspective of the storyteller.
So the first data points that we're gonna look at refer to the type of mistreatment that respondents reported. And as you can see, there are five different categories of this verbal, which refers to some verbal insults or assaults, some name-calling perhaps. And you'll see some examples later. There is also physical, when there is actually people have been hit or assaulted. There is procedural. We talks about, you know, there's any process related when they have been, people have been overlooked or they, in an application process or in any type of process of documentation or things of the nature. Now, programmatic talks about lack of access or access to inferior or deficient programming because of, because of the person being who they are. And other was a category that we included to make sure that people felt, they felt, you know, they needed to explain something a little bit more, that they didn't feel like there was one category that applied to them and just so that they could just freely disclose and describe their experience. Now, as you can see, verbal almost has 33% of that whole, the, the category followed, actually programmatic is the highest category here with almost 37% and followed by verbal. And the third one will be procedural. Now, let's see a couple of, of the examples under type of mistreatment. The one on the left, I'm gonna read first. My across the street neighbor tried and successfully to get our neighbors to sign a petition saying that our 25-year-old son, who is from Uganda, is a danger to the community and he should be, and should be forced to move away. Now the next one, more of a microaggression probably done out of ignorance. Had this happened a couple of times in Needham where people have asked me, where are you from? And I feel awkward because I don't know how to answer it. I know to say India, but the reality is I was born in the US and grew up- I know to say India, but the reality is I was born in the US and grew up here in Needham. So when you have, have that dark-skinned people still make you feel like an outsider or the other.
We also wanted to understand the sources of identity-based mistreatment in Needham. So we asked participants to identify this on the survey. The options are listed vertically on the right side of the screen. What we found is that more than half of the stories describe experiences of bias or discrimination via school authority. This was about 52%. And then the next largest category is other students, residents at 8%, law enforcement and neighbors at 6%. Here, we offer a few exemplars. So under the category of law enforcement, quote, "Our friends who are African-Americans left our house at about 10:30 PM and went to their car that was parked on the street. When they got into their car and Needham Police Department cruiser pulled to the side of their car and stopped in such a way that they couldn't leave, they felt very uncomfortable and afraid. They explained what they were doing, basically visiting friends. At that point, the officer said goodnight and left. It doesn't take much imagination, knowledge or understanding to interpret this as a profiling event." We would note that several stories in this sample also emphasize positive behaviors and actions by the Needham police in situations of potential bias. So we're choosing one that is representative, but we want to note that there's various data. In terms of the category of other residents, quote, "My wife, son and I were taking a walk near Needham Center and my son saw and heard a car behind us with several young adults shouting coronavirus at him as they drive past." And for the category of school, school authority, quote, "I am a real estate agent and I had helped a black family purchase a home in Needham. They wanted to get a sense of the school their children would be attending. My client went to the school office to ask if she could set up a brief meeting with the principal. She was told no. I called to ask about having such a meeting and I was easily able to arrange it. I was really horrified and upset to think that she was treated this way." School stories range from identity-based acts of omission, such as a teacher not addressing a racist incident in class, perhaps because it was uncomfortable, or lack of curriculum content dealing with black history or acts of commission, so separating students into classes or working groups by race. Wait, you're on mute, Anna.
I am trying to cough a little bit before my turn. So now, when asked, what, what did they think about the perceived cause for discrimination or mistreatment was? As you can see from this pie chart, there are several categories that were offered. There are four, five, six, eight, right? Yeah, I'm counting eight. From race to culture, nationality, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, socioeconomic status, religion and disability. None of those, 53% of the respondents said that race was the primary perceived cause of mistreatment, followed by 21% for culture, nationality or ethnicity.
After participants told their stories, the survey asked, how did this experience make you feel? This word cloud represents the survey responses with the larger words reflecting the most frequent emotions. The most frequently mentioned emotions here include things like fear, embarrassment, shame, pain, humiliation, disappointment. We included this question in the survey and report on it here because these words don't just imply painful experiences. Science increasingly shows that the negative emotions associated with bias and discrimination are linked to impacts on performance and health. You're on mute.
I am. Thank you. Just see if you're paying attention. So our final question asked participants to share, what do you wish would have happened? And responses, as you can see from the word cloud, varied. You know, kind of looking at it a little more closely, we could see that responses ranged from, it shouldn't have happened to hoping for an apology or to be treated with dignity and respect. Or also relying on probable cause versus racial profiling. So you can see that there is a wide range of responses. The theme we want to highlight here though is that this slide hopefully illustrates the desire for ownership and accountability of the actions inflicted with the hope of repairing the relationship with a targeted audience.
We also asked before the end of this, of the survey for suggestions for change. They were specifically asked, what types of change would you like to see in Needham? And we categorized these into three broad themes for the purpose of this report. The first was just acknowledging shortcomings in terms of inclusion and equity. The second, awareness and anti-racism training. And the third, policy reform and norm setting. For time, I'm going to move us forward.
So that brings us to the conclusion and we want to make sure that we drive this point home, that racism and identity-based discrimination does exist in Needham. Is a, is a sample, it's been described, not representative, but here are the data points that we want to share with you or underscore. Race was cited as the cause of discrimination by 40, 53 respondents, percent of respondents. Also, the fact that 40, 50%, over 50% of the data is programmatic and procedural in nature indicates that there is assistance issue. It's not just a bad, a few bad apples, a few random events. There are situations where there are processes and programs that are actually contributing to inequity. And also the fact that there are so many under the microaggression category gives us the impression that there is a cultural element. So this is part of the cultural fabric of Needham. So it is, those, those, those three points are worth highly, highlighting.
So in our view, it is tremendously useful to identify the span of experiences in Needham. But many of us also, of course, ask, how pervasive is this? And the answer is that we can't truly know without further data collection. And there's two types of data collection that seem to us worthy of consideration. The first is, you know, probably lived experiences to create a fully representative report based on Needham's marginalized community would need to complete its story collection via concerted outreach. This is important. Why? Because stories provide an understanding of the breadth of experiences in Needham as well as help us focus in on our particular problem areas and ideas for reform. But to truly understand prevalence within our city, we would need a quantitative representative survey of the entire community. This would tell us not only the prevalence of lived experience from racism, nationality, culture, all, all aspects, everything that we include in our survey, but also awareness of these experiences by different groups in the population, support for various reform measures, et cetera. So the way that we view this moment is as an opportunity. In part, we have an opportunity through timing because of George Floyd and the protests against systemic racism, racism have made this moment salient for all of us, including in Needham. And through lived experiences, we're able to bring stories that matter to us locally, up to the fore. We think that this is somewhat rare. So it's an opportunity for all of us in Needham and one that doesn't exist in most communities. But the first thing we can do, the first opportunity we have is to listen, to know that these stories are out there and to make time to take them in. Then to acknowledge them, the stories and the storytellers, and then to reflect as a person and as a community. And if we do that, basically engaging in what would be multiple sustained exercises of perspective giving in the community, then we have an opportunity to repair. And that's repairing relationships, but also expectations. Really, it's repairing a community narrative, which we have now ample evidence that is torn. So storytelling is a tool taken from restorative justice approaches and it's and one key goal in those approaches is to generate new collective narratives. And for Needham, that goal might be to generate an accurate and unifying narrative about local history and reality, as well as an inclusive vision of what we want to be as a community. Mute, Anna.
Yes, thank you. Once those two points are addressed, the next step is almost, if you think of a project and I'm going to, my business background comes in here, you know, once you've laid a foundation, then how do you implement? And one of the ways that we're suggesting is the third and last point, which is creating, committing, first committing to create systemic and sustainable. The change has to be sustainable and it has to be at the systems level. So to foster equity and inclusion. And there are two, two suggestions here. You know, to assess the town's current cultures and systems. Do we, do we know if, if what we have in place as a town is a community? Are they promoting or preventing inequity and exclusion? What are we doing? We don't know. So we need a thorough assessment of that. And also, we need to strengthen the town's leadership by acknowledging the need to learn. We need to learn. No one is an expert in this, in equity. We're all learning together. So needs to start at the top, as they say in, in business language. From the town leadership all the way down to all the whole community to learn about the, the journey of inclusion and equity and how these could erode the soul of that community. We don't want to do that. That's why we started this project. We know that Needham can do better. And this, we clearly see this as an opportunity, despite the fact that there are so many stories that are really painful to read. But this is an opportunity for us to move forward and do better. So with that, we want to, one last slide, Nicole, to thank, we couldn't have done this without a group of people who have helped us and we collectively have invested hundreds of volunteer hours. So we want to make sure that they are acknowledged as well. Here, as you can see, there are many, many who on some others that maybe we hopefully, you know, are still, we have not forgotten anyone. But now we would like to open it up to questions or comments.
Mute.
Thank you very much and thank you very much for your very important work. I think one of the challenges we all face is learning how to see the world through the experiences of other people. Because, I mean, I hear the term microaggression and I realize as I come to understand it that I commit microaggressions without even knowing about it. So I think gaining an understanding is crucial and having the ability for people to be heard is very important. And sometimes that's through informal or unofficial groups such as the work you're doing. So I want to thank you personally for doing that. Does anybody have any comments, questions or anything else they want to add to this? Mary Ann?
Oh, I was going to ask first of all, if maybe you could un-share it just so we could see everybody again. So thank you for the work that you did pulling this together. I was actually glad to see some of the stories that were included in this one that weren't in the earlier report we saw. When you started, I actually thought this project was doing something different. So I want to be sure that I understand where you see it now. I had thought originally that you were starting a project that was going to be sort of in service to the town's work that we had laid out this summer to help inform that through the stories that could be collected through somebody who would be, you know, you would be more maybe of a neutral third party. It now, I now feel like you've described to me a process that ran for the summer but is really finished and it's not going forward and it's still not happening. So I just want to understand what you are and where you are and how this fits so that I know kind of how to think about it.
And we are, I think the best way to say this is that we came into this and still hold a vision of a complete story collection process. Meaning that, once we started and we felt very committed to, to, to doing this right and to gaining trust. We've always seen the first report as a way of gaining that trust and sort of following through with our intent, you know, to de-identify information, to amplify stories. I think that what we realized as we came into this is that it is a lot of work. It's not a two or even five or 10-hour a week project, many weeks. And so at this point, we still are wholly committed to that vision. We're pressing pause for a couple of weeks to figure out how to assess resources and capabilities. Like, so, so what we see as needing to happen here, now that we know what that entails, we need to figure out how we're going to do that.
Yes.
It's, it's the next step. So this is phase one. And really, who is going to, who clicks on the link in social media are people who are already activated, they're online. They're not afraid of retaliation. They may not, you know, they're not suffering maybe to the same degree that others are for, for whom clicking on that link might entail a bigger journey. For the next step, where we're, we would need to go into communities and really socialize what we've done and ask for participation and trust, that's going to require a lot of outreach. And there's a lot of networking and relationship building. And I think that we've become aware of that and we find it to be beautiful and important work. And we both have day jobs. So we're, we're kind of trying to think of what is realistic? How to do that and, and do it well.
Yes, Mary Ann. And to your point about, you know, stopping, it was necessary to kind of put a stop to assess how much we had collected and what patterns were forming. So it was necessary, there's, there's actually several stories that are already still coming through the pipeline. And, and not to count the stories that Nicole and I have heard verbally, the people who want to disclose to us, but they are afraid to, to share because they are afraid that people are, you know, for, afraid of retaliation, frankly. There's, there are many stories that we've heard in the, the period of the two months that I want to tell you, but don't put it down because I don't want people to, to figure out who I am because I'm afraid. There's a lot of that going on. So we needed to figure out how do we, let's capture as much as we can within the timeframe that we could, you know, if we could make it work given our other priorities and then see where we go with this. And we definitely feel that this, the, the Lived Experiences Project report is a contribution to the work that the town is doing, to the work the Noir is doing. The Needham Diversity Initiative, the Equal Justice Needham. So this is kind of our, our contribution. We figured out you were, there were discussions, but there was no data. So this, this is the part, and Nicole and our expertise are both in storytelling and I actually do studies on microaggressions myself. So we, it was a beautiful partnership to, to kind of figure out where, what can we collect? And what will the data tell us, even though we knew it wasn't representative, but it was a start. So.
The, the survey continues. We now have 67 entries as opposed to the 40 that we reported on in the report. So that's without any work on our behalf. But because of our exposure to others in the community, we, we understand that the further outreach would be required to get a great many more of those stories. But we are wholeheartedly behind supporting the efforts that the, the town is making, period. We're just trying to figure out how to do that best.
Well, so I do think the stories are really important. I think to the extent that, that ultimately people get stories that they hear, for whatever reason, those are even more compelling than stories that you read. I don't know why that's the case, but it does seem to make a difference. But reading them is, is definitely powerful and you read things and think, oh heavens, how can that be? And we can definitely be better. So I, I do think bringing the stories to light is an important part of this. One of the things that I was curious about, and I don't, it doesn't need to be answered here, I was curious about time that people had been in town, because I do think I hear stories, I know there are people who have been in town for a long Because I do think I hear stories, I know there are people who have been in town for a long time, but you do hear stories about people who move in and who leave. So I'm wondering if to some extent, the population gets a little bifurcated in that front. And I just don't know, but I'm wondering if your data helps to paint that picture a little bit. And that wasn't one of the one of the pieces that we looked at. But it is an intriguing first start. Thank you.
Would anybody else care to comment? Matt?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your work. And there are some nuggets that I picked up along the way in the report. I just, you know, from where I'm sitting, you know, we base policy on a lot of different things, but I just, and as you said at the beginning, that it's not a representative survey. So as we move forward, we have conclusions. And one of the conclusions was there's systemic racism or that it's in the fabric, what I heard. I just want to kind of take a step back and say, if we want to start making these conclusions, we should, and I agree with one of the conclusions that we should have a valid survey that that reaches more people and to get a picture that we can actually validate. I know there's some stories in there that I've actually heard, you know, two sides as there is in any, in any situation. But I just want to make sure that we're basing our policies and move forward on concrete examples, on statistics, on data. And maybe this in some way helps us to get to that point. But I again, I just want to caution that. Although there's the nuggets in there, we just have to kind of take it that this might be a beginning of this and kind of see where it all flushes out instead of drawing conclusions at this time. But I want to thank you for your work. As you know, I'm a member of Marianna Noiri and it's something that we're going to discuss in that setting as well. So thank you.
Nicole, did you want to say something?
No, just I, I, I do a lot of statistics as a experimentalist in social psychology. So I wholeheartedly agree that in order to draw valid conclusions, you really have to have decent data. I would say here, though, that we are not saying, so so for me, the dilemma is when you report a pie chart and you say thirty seven percent is X. It's easy to mislead people and think that, oh, thirty percent of all the discrimination or bias in Needham is X. And that is not what we're saying. I feel like our conclusions are very valid. What this sample tells us is that these types of bias and discrimination are happening. What we can't say is with what prevalence. But we absolutely can say there is programmatic and procedural discrimination in Needham, just as there is verbal cultural issues that need to be addressed, right? We know that this establishes that. And there will always be sides. And that is actually the next part. What we originally envisioned for lived experiences is a series of community discussions. That's something that I'm, my heart is very tied to. I think it's extremely important. And that is the place for storytelling and story giving and real connection to to figure out where we are as a community and to hear each other. But I just want to, on the, on the data point, wholeheartedly agree, we have to have a representative sample of the community for prevalence. But what we can say is that it's here. We can say it's here. We just don't know how much it's here exactly in which places.
Great. And and just another point I was thinking of too, if you receive any, let's say positive, maybe for lack of a better word, or some, you know, someone said and they went to, I'm giving example, went to a classroom and this was taught and it really helped their understanding. Is there any of those nuggets that you have? And you know, it would be nice to share kind of what people have done or what great, what things have happened that have helped on the, in the racism. So I just think that would be a nice.
Yeah, there is, there is, there are several bystander stories that we that we have collected as well that were, you know, offered. So even even and the more rewarding thing was that some of the examples are actually happening in elementary school among children. So there is hope. It's not all bleak, but there is a lot of work, you know, and and that's why I always, when we do this type of work, they usually is a downer, really. I mean, frankly, if you know, oh, my God, is all these things are so negative. But but sometimes in order to to have, you know, to be healthy, you need to look at the source of the the issue, the pain, right? So we're looking at the pain now, but with the, with the, with the hopes of of healing. That's where we go. And it's not, there's not, we're not trying to point fingers or blame. We're trying to say, let's go to the root cause of what can make, what is stopping Needham from being a better town, a more equitable town. And so so we have to do, we have to take a hard look at that. That's the first step.
Thank you very much. John, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. Nicole and Anna, thank you so much for this report and for the work. And and I do agree, I think this is a start. I think that that we're starting on multiple fronts. And I think we're trying to figure this out. Are we going to come to conclusions? Well, we will draw conclusions and the conclusions unfortunately that we will end up drawing is is there a, is there racism in Needham? I believe there's racism everywhere. And I do believe that it is cultural going back to the, well, to before the founding of the nation. And so many things that as we have all engaged in this going, you know, in dealing with what's going on in the country and even what's going on here is the little things that we deal with or the words that we use. Now we're being brought to the fore that maybe this isn't the way to say it. And and I think that there are going to be changes that we have to make as as a society. It's going to be very difficult. I think we all know that because, you know, we, it's, I sit back and I say, how do we make a wholesale change? And I do believe that part of going back to one of the previous discussions that we had is I do believe a lot of it starts with education of our children. I think when children are young and they're able to be educated, I think that that is a place, a good starting place. I think it's difficult to to teach adults. Can we learn? Of course we can. But that, that concludes that we want to learn. And there are unfortunately too many adults that don't want to change. And they don't want to embrace any meaningful change. And this is, I, I, I do not have the answers. You, you have far more experience than I do. The committee that Mary Ann and Matt are, have started. I just think that we have a lot of work to do. We have to hear, listen to a lot of people and see how, see the path that we can proceed down. And it's going to take work on everybody's part. So thank you. Thank you for the work that you do.
Thanks, John. Dan?
Yeah, I, this is, this is a helpful piece of of work and it was particularly good that you gave us the survey and the analysis and the redacted individual stories of people told because it really allowed allows the viewer, the reader to understand. I think in a much better, at a much better level than than might otherwise be the case. I had one, assuming that there is, or even if there isn't, I know something like this will happen in the future. The, the, the survey asked for when did this thing, this incident happen? But it did it in the narrative portion and some of the respondents put it in and some of them didn't. And it was clear that this, some of the stories were, came in over quite a range of years of time. And in some cases, it doesn't really make any difference. But in others, and I think particularly as we in, in, in the schools where with the real initiative and the audit that they did two years ago and the efforts that they've been making to prove, it's really important for us to locate things in time because it says a lot. There are things that we think, well, that happened back then, but it wouldn't happen now. Well, if that's, that is so, we'd like to know it. And if it's not so, we need to know it. I think your point about being engaged listeners is the key to the whole thing. But and and that is the right way to to approach some of these of this stuff. But there is the point that everybody you see on the screen is a problem solver. So we, that's where we're going with with this stuff. So we take this information and try to put it in the form that helps, helps us guide things. And in in that extent, you know, I thought it was very good that you said, well, this isn't a statistically accurate representation. And and that's fine. It doesn't have to be. We're talking about people's individual stories and we, and we, and we take from from them. And then we fit them, we all live here, we had, we fit them in our own, in our own understandings. And and I, I had an experience with something that probably many of the others have seen or or seen better or different, which was a Twitter thread called Black in the Ivory, which is a, just a very large compendium of, of of input from Black and other minority people in academic settings. Yes, it's not about, it's not a Stevie Wonder song, which was how I my attention, but it. And as you go through it, it becomes clear, well, some of these stories are anonymous and some, the people really come out, they're very identical people, viable people who name themselves. Some really have the clear ring of truth or can even be documented. Others, you go, well, maybe there's another side of this story, or in fact, maybe this isn't so at all. But over time, as you go through the, the totality of this, you can see that there are some themes come out that are, that ring true to your, to our experience and things that teach you about things about other experiences, at least for me as a, you know, an older suburban white guy, would never be very unlikely to be exposed to. And furthermore, that there's worse stuff that obviously is not been posted. Because that's just the way it is. So you have to, you have to understand everything in context. But for me, I'm not against having studies be statistically accurate. But I'm, I really think that now that we're in a, we're in a, we're in a changing environment in which we are deter, we know there's a problem. We are determined to make progress on it. So having these, these stories and this input that we can take kind of review in light of our own experience or see where they fit or get them to the relevant departments and see what they have to say about that. It makes a lot of sense because, you know, right now, we've got about thirty three thousand people in town. And yes, they're all individuals and they have a, you know, at least thirty three different thousand, different ways of looking at things. But it's important for us to get them to live and work together in ways that are better and fair for everyone. And we know not only from this, but from our own experience and things that have happened, particularly in the area of race equity. We have a lot of deficits and we have a public that wants us to make progress on it. So I really, this is a very helpful, very helpful input to have. And I hope that this can be part of our work going forward. So thank you.
Thank you for your work and thank you for sharing that work here tonight. I think we're in the middle of a very long and difficult journey and are going to be having many difficult conversations and issues to deal with. And I think to the extent that we can understand how people think and how they experience the, the work, the relationships we have in this community. And if we can understand how we affect other people, that will help us along that path and getting anecdotal work or information to us and to the rest of the community to help all of us gain an understanding of what we do and how it affects other people is crucial. So thank you very much. And I know Mary Ann wanted to say something. She, Mary Ann?
Well, yeah, and I may not say all of it. So Chimondo Adichie talks about the power of a single story. Part of why I think this is valuable is it's multiple stories, right? It starts to allow you to to see the patterns. And hopefully for people to sense that this is not a one off. This is something that is felt in a more pervasive way. It's been here a long time. It needs to be fixed. It needs to change and it must change. But people need to also understand that there's not any magic fix. Each, each of us need to start and it needs to start early and younger and you need to grow up so that it doesn't get inculcated in in certain ways. I was struck, I think, as I read the report by a number of comments that related to, well, if we just had more affordable housing or if we just had hired more teachers of color. You know, I'm glad to hear that there's some good things starting back in elementary school because in fact, that's where we need to start working at the college level. One of the, one of the statistics I know that so struck me a couple of years ago in the area of economics, several years ago, there were two PhDs of color in the whole US in that particular cycle. So the ability for all the colleges in the US to change their staff in every major that they have is a real challenge. Okay? I can also move that down to our high school, right? Where in fact, again, I work in my day job at Wellesley College, I think of some of our students who are student teaching, those students who are of color. They want to go work in inner cities. And you know what? I say, you go, girl, because gosh, they need good teachers there so badly of color that they can relate to. But they're not coming to the suburbs yet. And I know how hard Needham is trying to recruit. But it is, it is going to be a challenge until we can build that base. And it's going to take a lot of work from all of us to build that base and help all of our citizens to feel successful in every way so that we can all contribute and and be respected for the contributions that we make. And I look forward to the day when we get there, but that is the work that we are all committing to.
May I?
Of course.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Um, I just wanted, on the, on the topic of hope, I wanted to say that we didn't have time to include a section on bystanders. We asked people if there were bystanders at their experience and if so, what did they do? And there is a lot of hope in terms of agency, in terms of how each of us is working on this. I think it's profoundly empowering to know that when people saw others stand up for them or not go along with it, they, they were heartened. They felt buffered from the pain. They knew they weren't alone, right? So every act that we take matters as citizens in Needham and as policymakers. What we do influences norms. And this, this is, Mary Ann, I really appreciated what you just said. And I absolutely agree, starting in schools, starting young matters. But it's, it's not too late for the rest of us. We know in my line of work, norms actually predict people's behavior better than their beliefs or their attitudes. Post genocide Rwanda, your willingness to invite someone who slaughtered people in your village to dinner was whether or not you thought others would do it. That's what predicted whether you would do it, not whether you actually believed you should or were afraid of them or thought poorly of them. We've seen this in many contexts. Norms are drivers of human behavior. And we all influence norms every day in what we do. So I think, you know, we, we have this idea of of that report, we would like to write whenever we get a weekend off from family and everything else. But there is hope here. And I think, I think that we, we definitely work in the schools but really thinking through how our policies and our individual actions set norms is for me, the biggest place for change.
Thank you. Anna, do you want to say something?
Yes, thank you. There, it could be overwhelming. I, I definitely relate to, to your comment, Mary Ann, that is, is a big enterprise, is a big, is, I see it as a journey. And, you know, being a leadership coach, what I usually tell people I work with, when there's a big project that they need to take is just looking at small wins, the concept of small wins and maybe one day at a time. So if we can just look at the whole picture of what we're trying to do, which is going to take years, is going to take a lot of effort, collected, collective effort from many, you know, all of us in the room here perhaps and and more in the community at large, that what, what step can we take today? What book can we read? What article? What conversation can we have? What can acknowledgement can we make to a person of color? What, what, how can we be a bystander, an upstander actually to someone? So once, one action a day, even just thinking, even if you think that it may be they, we are confused, we are, you know, conflicted. And one thing that I I offer with a lot of respect here is to not call it anecdotes. These events are lived experiences. They have happened. They're anecdotes have a connotation of like something casual. These are experiences that are, they are undermining people's souls. So perhaps we can start there.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in and I, I'm sure we'll be seeing you folks again. This has been very helpful, but it's just the beginning for us.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
This brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is an update on COVID. And we have with us Tim McDonald, who's Director of Public Health and Human Services, will be giving us an update. Tim, is he here? Tim, the floor is yours when you are led into the Zoom. Welcome, Tim. Thanks for all the work you're doing.
Well, thanks very much. I'm glad to be here with you.
Floor is yours.
Sure. So I, I appreciate the chance to, to come before the select board and, and present some information to you, uh, about COVID and to the community about COVID. I think people know that the state, uh, in mid-August made a change in how they present data to try to sort of simplify it. I think they went with a sort of stoplight approach, uh, based on the average daily cases per hundred thousand populations. They have a green, yellow, red. Needham is in the green, uh, this past week is going to likely be in the green on, uh, with the data that the state will release on Thursday. Uh, but part of the reason that I asked for a few minutes of the board's time is to tell you that we are quite concerned, um, about the cases and the trend in cases. We've had seven clusters of cases since mid-September. Uh, before that, we had no clusters since early May. Um, and a cluster, uh, by the state definition is at least two confirmed cases from different households with a shared exposure, uh, where a close contact is known or suspected to have taken place amongst a group of five or more people. So you can consider those in, um, settings like, um, a team or a recreational activity or a social group. And so the fact that we've had seven, uh, clusters since, um, mid-September, when we had gone months without them is, is a cause for concern. As I think the board knows, um, nationwide, the, the country set a record for average daily cases over the weekend, uh, more than eighty thousand. Uh, Massachusetts has since, uh, cracked a thousand cases a day for the past few days. Uh, that's a, a very, that's a significant cause for concern. Uh, and Needham has seen an uptick in cases as well. Nothing is certainly guaranteed, but I would imagine that after this week's data, because the data does lag, uh, that Needham will be going back into the yellow and, and maybe continuing up from there based on the, the number of cases we've seen at least over the last five or six days. The point I think I wanted to really talk to the board about was, we're seeing a really significant increase in the number of close contacts of cases, especially the close contacts of youth. So, you know, when we were talking about earlier in the pandemic, when there was sort of a fairly complete shutdown of government and private business, it was very challenging for you to have contact with a number of people. So even if you were actively shedding the virus and didn't know it, there were only a handful of people that you might run into. Often they were within your family unit. With school back in session, we've yet to see sustained transmission in the Needham public schools, but we have seen a number of school-aged youth who have gotten COVID through social activities or through exposure or athletic events. We, over the last three weeks, have seen the average youth contact, uh, sorry, the average youth case of COVID have fifteen or more contacts, which is a very high number. Um, and, and bear in mind that I said that was outside of school. It would have been, if they had been infectious when they were in school, that would be much higher again. Uh, but these are people who were playing as part of a sports team and, uh, you know, were exposed through that route or exposed to their teammates. So I think it, it's a cost for concern for myself and for the, the public health nurses as well as for the Board of Health. The total number of activities that people are engaging in and, and every new activity that people choose to do is a risk. It increases the number of social contacts you have, and that's a strong predictor for the increase in viruses. Um, I think many people sort of consider the fact that we can do everything that we used to do, we just have to do it with a mask or with a little bit more distance. And, and I think that's not the right message. I think what we're hoping, um, the Public Health Division and the Board of Health is hoping to really instill in people is that they need to prioritize their activities. They need to decide what are the really critical functions they want to have happen and limit some of their other activities to make sure that they can still do those critical things. So if, if school is a critical activity, and I'm pretty sure the superintendent would say it is, then the number of additional activities like extracurriculars or athletic teams, parents need to balance how many of those they're going to have a young person participate in. Um, we've had a number of sort of, you know, very, uh, active, high achieving, uh, Needham students that are playing on, you know, multiple teams in multiple sports all in the fall, um, so that someone is going from, uh, you know, a hockey practice to a soccer practice, to a lacrosse practice, to a second soccer team practice. And that's a very high, uh, level of exposure. So I think I, that was sort of the key message that I'm hoping to, uh, present to the board. And also, uh, in the coming weeks, you'll see the Public Health Division trying to uh, reinforce this message. The general concept being that there's a sort of social budget you should afford yourself. And if you are constantly exposing yourself to more people, you're increasing your potential for exposure. Um, if you are in close contact with, you know, a dozen or more people, that's a dozen or more routes of potential exposure that might get you COVID, that might force you to have to quarantine. Those are the key points I wanted to relay to the board and, and certainly I know, um, it's been a jam-packed agenda. If the board has questions, I'd be happy to, to help respond to them.
Thank you, Tim. And this is an important subject, so we can certainly take the time to discuss it if there's things to be discussed. Does anybody have any comments or questions? John?
Thanks, Tim. Um, I, I, I guess that begs the question. So we're in the green, we are moving to the yellow. We don't know if we'll get to red. Is it just the behavior of students, kids in school, um, or are there adult activities that we also should be aware of and possibly modify or modify the behavior that adults are doing in the community? Or is the adults are getting, or there's a spread that takes place be, from the students into the households where adults live too. So how is it that we can sort of bring this under control?
Sure. Sorry. You guys getting an echo? No? Okay. Um, sorry about that. John, I think it's a very good point. This is not entirely driven by youth, uh, spread. And we know that over the past couple of weeks, we've had a fairly, um, even breakdown across the age spectrum. So some, uh, cases, you know, three or four cases in the five to eighteen range, two or three cases in, you know, um, nineteen to, to thirty-something. And then, you know, maybe not too many cases in the thirty-five to fifty and then a few cases. So it's, it's not just youth. I think it, it, it does speak to people thinking about their activities. I know that, uh, you know, a number of people are, are sort of very challenged by the length of the pandemic and are weary sort of of the restrictions that have been put in place. But a lot of people are sort of associating outside of their family's unit and are doing so without maybe proper respect for distancing. It's not that they're, uh, you know, sitting outside across a picnic table from each other, talking with a mask on. It's that they're, you know, going over someone's house for a cookout and maybe stepping inside if it gets a little cold for a while. Um, and I think that's the type of activity, especially as the weather changes, that there's going to be more temptation for people to do and is really a cause for concern that that could drive cases.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Dan? And then Matt? Dan, you're on mute. Done it myself. Don't feel bad.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim. I, I really appreciate your coming in and, 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 and finding the way to kind of voice this in a way that hopefully that we can get this message out. I mean, to me, my conclusion as a, you know, a lower, uh, uh, you know, a local official, but working in this larger system that we're part of is if we had a consistent national health policy approach to this issue nationwide with standards that are based on, which we might agree with some of them and not, not with others, but following basically the CDC guidelines and the, and the, and the science as we best understand it, we would not be nearly as badly off as we are. Unfortunately, instead, we've had inconsistent policies from the very top. It's become very politicized. It's been kicked down to states and then states either do or don't act and, and individual cities get involved. And it's created a situation where at least as I, you know, with individual people, it's almost like they each feel they have to make up their own public health policy. That doesn't work. I think that we're very fortunate in our region. And I do give credit to, to our governor and our public health system and what you guys have done to try to have that consistent messaging out there. It takes patience and persistence. It's based on the public, it's based on the science. When people say, well, we didn't wear masks before and now we're wearing masks, that's because the science can change as our understanding of it changes and we can improve and, and, and get better. But it is subject to that. It really is persistent, boring. It goes on for a long time. These are not things that come naturally, um, you know, in our, in our culture. So, um, I think one of the things we need to do is to try to find a way to message out the effect of how appreciative we are of the thousands of people here who are following the rules really carefully all of the time and the careful decision-making they're making because there, there's got to be some reward, you know, for perfect attendance or whatever. You know, what I'm saying is that I, I just think people are getting, a lot of people are kind of worn down and they're looking at these statistics and saying, what's the point? The point is if we stick with it, we are better off than we would have been. And if we stick with it, it will be better. We had to get it, get it right and stay with it. And then I think the, not to go all Star Trek on this, but my thing is, one of what I, it, it, some of this discussion should get, might be better voiced in the fourth dimension. The idea that time is an element of this thing in terms of your exposures to other people are not just being six feet away, but how close you are over a period of time or how many other people or how many people total are in a room over a period of an hour. It isn't just how many are in there at that time. And I think your example of, uh, picking it and trying to find ways that you can really describe that to people in a way that they understand. And I think your example of, uh, of kids playing on multiple sports teams. I think really a little talk with the sports leagues and the sports community and saying, look, go through your rosters. People know when kids are playing on, in more than one sport because everybody talks. They know, it's not a secret. Um, in an ordinary times, they do it. That's part of try, of trying to achieve excellence. But for this year, one sport in one season, because the way that that would diminish cross-pollinization, keeping each kid in one pod of students, somebody gets sick, you contact, trace them and, and in a few days you're in, you're doing okay. You got a group that's got three kids playing two sports and in some of these sports they're playing with two or three kids in that pot or with another group, you can infect a lot of people very fast. And I think that's a good example in that we could really kind of break, trace that down and, 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 and break it down in a, in a non-confrontational way, but just being firm and saying, you have to understand this is the public health and the sports community does, they can help you with this. You've got to make sure that they understand. And the same goes, I think, for, for the grownups. Um, I think with a lot of older people, they may think, well, I'm, I'm going to stay in my, you know, I've stayed home and I'm going to have my groceries delivered and that's that. But if they go out and they, and they get together with a few friends or family, they say, oh, well, that was fine. So we'll just all bets, you know, we're back to normal. No. If you, if you really want to get, have a small family get together and everybody's been careful, good. Then don't do it again for ten days or don't go out to a restaurant with your, with your friends for ten days after that. And again, this whole thing can be slowed down and brought into control. And at the same time, people can have manageable ways of living relatively normal lives for, for, I think we've got a year of this ahead of us. Uh, even if we do it the right way and, and, and the people need, they need to understand that that's so and that understand that it's going to take this kind of quiet drudgery, but that we will be better off if we all do it.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, Matt?
I'm still counting on the vaccine. I, I'll take the under, I hope, Dan. Just in, as far as sports are concerned, you know, I know hockey was a big one that, and I'm not trying to pick on hockey, but actually know a couple who got it from hockey. I know we shut that down as a state. So I think that that was a positive step. Uh, my question is, a constituent called me, I think it was last week now, and he thought he had some symptoms and really didn't know where to turn as far as he went to the BI or called them, uh, because he's not used to getting sick and, you know, kind of a younger gentleman. And they said, oh, call your doctor. You need to prescribe, you need to, you know, get an appointment. His doctor was away. So then he went down to an urgent care facility where the line, he had to get in at five in the morning. And then he had come back eight and he's like, I'm trying. So he calls me and says, I'm trying to do the right thing here. And it just seemed, you know, I see the signs on the highway saying, feel sick, get tested. You know, I just want to find a, a way to get tested. And I said, well, I don't call your doctor again, and, but I'll try to find out or as a group, as a town, if there's a way to give people some that aren't familiar with the medical community, give places even out of town or step by step to actually get tested. Because just based on this story, it's very frustrating. And he said, if he almost just gave up or, you know, said, you know, like, it's, it's not working. So I don't know if you've heard that, Tim, at all or people complaining, but is there a guidance on how we can get people tested quicker?
Sure. Um, and actually I wrote you an email about that. Um, we did include, uh, some additional information about testing and where you can get it done. Uh, in the email that the PIO Cindy put out on Thursday, and we actually made it a little bit more prominent on our website because there was a lot of information on the website and sometimes it can be hard to, the COVID-specific website. It, it is a real challenge right now. Um, and I think, you know, there's some confusion about testing. Really, we're looking for in a, in a public health context, a PCR test, which is sort of the nasal swab. Uh, there's quicker tests, but the accuracy on those is not great. Um, so we're really still looking for those PCR tests. The best location that I've found honestly, um, is the Stop the Spread websites, which, uh, Stop the Spread locations, uh, they have a Stop the Spread website the state has. The closest location is in Framingham. There's a couple of other spots, including Marlboro. But it, it, it can be a very significant wait time. A number of urgent cares have been overwhelmed by demand and I think that's, you know, I, you can trace it sort of however, however high up you want to the state level, to the federal level, but the lack of availability of quick ready testing is still a challenge. I do want to mention, if I could, uh, in response to part of Dan's, uh, statement, the athletic leagues in Needham have, um, submitted sort of COVID safety plans that I've actually all reviewed personally. They've, uh, worked with Stacy Mulroy, our Director of Park and Recreation. And they're, they're very good. They have strong attention to detail. They follow state guidelines. I don't have any complaints in that context. I think it's, even if you do sort of everything right, and even if you're very careful, each additional, you know, you could do a Christmas tree sort of, um, analogy, right? Each additional ornament you hang on the Christmas tree, there's a slightly increased chance that the tree tips over. So I think each additional activity that people do, no matter how well managed, does increase the, the risk both to them and then for an event in the community.
Thanks, Tim. Matt, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Mary Ann? And then John?
Yeah, my thoughts, uh, um, Stop the Spread sites were for asymptomatic testing, not for symptomatic. Is that correct?
You can actually use it for both. They, they, they are intended for asymptomatic and primarily in the community in which they're situated, but they've made them available to people from other communities and people who do have, um, exposure. Generally, the, the recommendation is that you have a doctor's order or an order from a public health authority saying you need to get tested, either because you were identified as a close contact or because you're manifesting symptoms, which you'd obviously want to talk to your primary care physician about. I do know that a number, to Matt's point, the number of primary care physicians have been frustrated, um, by the challenges of getting their patients tested. Uh, the city of Boston has done some interesting things with their community health centers to try to have sort of neighborhood-based testing. Uh, I know some, some private vendors like CBS have done it through urgent care sites, their mini-clinics. But it, it's still a real challenge and, and some providers have had a real problem getting a responsive and timely location where they can refer patients to. But it's still a real challenge, and some providers have had a real problem getting a responsive and timely location where they can refer patients to.
I was going to ask, you know, I'm kind of spoiled at the college where we get results back the next morning. What are you seeing for the general public for testing turnaround times these days? I'm just curious how long it's taking most people now from test to result.
Most people, it's a little bit hard, because it does vary significantly by provider. Most people are still in the two-to-three-day range, sometimes day and a half. There are still outliers, depending on where you go, that, that are the four, five, or six days. And that's really at the point where it's, it's not useful that it's taking that long. You know, there's, there's also sort of, unfortunately, there's laboratory oversights. We've had cases where a husband and wife got tested at the same time and they had the same end result, which was they both had COVID and one person got their results. And they got tested the same day, one person got the result back Tuesday, another person didn't get it back till Saturday morning. Just no good way to explain why that is.
Thanks, Tim.
And then I'm just going to say, before you leave, I just hope you'll give the public health message about Halloween once more, but.
Sure, and, and we've, we've sort of sent out some messages about this. I know it's, it's a topic that, that people are concerned about. We're not canceling Halloween in Needham, we want people to enjoy Halloween, but do it safely. I think the people are much more creative than me, I think like Cindy or PIO, you know, said how to have a, a safe, not sleepy Halloween. And so that's, that's trick-or-treating in, in small groups with your family members, your immediate family members, rather than, you know, maybe the temptation in the past would be for a whole herd of neighborhood children to kind of get together and walk together and their parents to be walking behind, really encouraging people to do that in their family group. We're encouraging people, and this is especially important for young children. If their costume involves a mask of some kind, they really need to, you know, rethink that and not put a superhero mask, for example, over their cloth face covering. We don't want to get in a situation where people are having trouble breathing. And for people who are handing out candy, I think one thing is, especially, you know, Needham seniors, if they're nervous, they're concerned about exposure, just leave your light off, I think that's the best guidance. But for people who are interested in distributing candy, we're really recommending that you stick away, stay away from the bowl full of candy. We're recommending you have a platter, maybe you have one or two pieces or three pieces of candy in a small Ziploc bag that you individually separate so that there's less chance for fomite transmission from contaminated surfaces.
Thanks, Tim. John, you've been very patient, so please.
Oh, no, I, and Mary Ann asked one part of my question, which was going to be Halloween, and I know that I'm going to ask a question that, we still have time, so there'll be multiple opportunities for you and for us, Tim, to, you know, talk with people. But we have Thanksgiving coming up. And what's the advisory on Thanksgiving?
Sure, and I can probably say that I know the governor started talking about this today, and I haven't read all of his talking points yet. I think the, the guidance is for people to really consider who is in their immediate family unit and what travel, if any, is safe travel. So, you know, oftentimes, it's a, it's a great privilege to get together with extended family on the holidays. And in many cases, that is not going to be appropriate. But people have to sort of figure out their own situation and balance their own risk. A number of people have children that are at college in other states that might be returning, you know, and have some questions about how to do that safely. And I know the CDC a couple days ago came out with some specific guidance about that. A number of colleges have also sort of taken this into account in that a number of them have sort of closed their fall semester with Thanksgiving and don't plan to resume, you know, their, their semester until the spring or the, the late winter, rather than having people go back between Thanksgiving and the winter holidays. But we are going to certainly message that, I think, probably especially after we get through Halloween and the election. Our, our focus is going to turn to public messaging about how to have a safe and healthy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
And just my own observation, I think particularly among younger people in the community, adolescents, I don't think they really get how serious this is. I just don't think they think it's that dangerous. And I don't know how we get the message, I think there's a place with social control. I think people need to be willing to say things. I know the response you get when you do say something is not particularly affirming, but I think if we keep giving that message, maybe some of it will be heard. Kate, please.
I just wanted to point out that, as Tim said, you know, you might have a person who has fifteen contacts that need to be traced. And we're very much in favor of having our own town staff do the contact tracing, because it happens much more quickly, so that we can, you know, stop something, as Tim said, if it's, somebody goes about their business for five days, you know, without knowing. So, but fifteen contact tracings for, you know, a dozen cases, it's, it's overwhelming for the staff. And just really, they're doing an amazing job and just, that's why we're trying to do it internally, because it's the safest way to do it. But it is very challenging for their team, and I think they're doing great work.
Yes, I owe you a great debt of thanks for all of the work in this particularly trying time, especially for you guys, because a lot of this falls on your shoulders. So thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Any final words before we go to the next item? Thanks, Tim. Good luck on trick-or-treating. The next item on our agenda is the town manager's portion of our agenda. And the first item there is small cell wireless facility policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At your last meeting, you held a public hearing on the small cell wireless facilities policy and closed the hearing and left the record open for seven days. We did get a few comments, and the comments were very much in line with what you heard at the hearing. It's this great desire to have prohibition on the location of small cell wireless facilities from schools and homes. We did run all of the requested changes by a special counsel who specializes in this type of work. And he really felt that, that would open up the board to challenges from the providers. It's just best to have the clear guidance out there so that everybody knows what the rules are. It is, it is true in most of our built-up parts of town that a significant distance between homes and a pole is not achievable because of, you know, the locations of the poles and the, the size of our lots. So on, on that advice, we are recommending that the board adopt the policy that was presented at your meeting on October thirteenth.
On the assumption that perfection is the enemy of the good, I would solicit a motion on the draft policy.
I'm moved.
There's a motion, is there a second? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Dan Matthews?
Yes.
Matt Borelli?
Yes.
Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous, thank you very much, Kate. And it's a work in progress, so I'm sure that it will evolve over time as we gain better and better understanding of our ability to affect outcome.
And I would note, Mr. Chair, that Sandy did virtually all of the work on that policy.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
As always.
I just have one more item, Mr. Chair, and I just, very, following on what Tim had been talking about, we have recently reactivated on a partial basis our emergency operations center. You know that we stood down the EOC when, in the early part of the summer. And we really want to make sure that we're fully prepared and get ahead of any problems that might occur. So in our first full EOC meeting today, we'll be meeting weekly until, or hopefully, if it doesn't, but until the situation requires that we meet earlier. We just wanted to make sure that we have a steady response. We have a new crop, some people have changed roles, we've brought some new people into the EOC, because the exhaustion factor in the last time really made us realize that we needed some more depth in our EOC staffing. So we've, we're training some new folks and they'll do a great job. So just so you know, we're, we're setting that up. Tim is the incident commander, because it is a public health emergency. And we will be staffing the, the sections, operations, logistics, planning, finance, policy, those kinds of things, so.
Can you talk about the challenge that COVID presents while you're doing that, Kate? Just briefly?
You know, the, when we had the first round in mid-March, the EOC met in person and then sort of started dispersing in that, you know, we set up an area where there could be safe, but there weren't, it really isn't a way to have twenty people in our buildings meeting. And it's, it's very, it is, it gets very difficult for interpersonal communication and to just to hear things and follow up on things when you have all these meetings on Zoom. So we have a number of ways that we communicate and we use our Zoom platforms and other ways to make sure people are all getting the same information so that we can make quality decisions. But it's, it's not easy, it's a lot easier when you do a tabletop exercise, when you think that there might be a propane spill in a truck that gets hit by a train, which is something we've trained on repeatedly. And whenever everybody's in the same room and you can react to each other. So it is very, it's, it's challenging, but we've done it, so we know we can do it again.
Yes, and it's just another reason why we really need to appreciate our first responders, because that's just another example of the challenges they face. So thank you. Do you have anything else at all? Is there a motion to, does anybody have any committee reports? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion on John's motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Dan Matthews?
Yes.
Matt Borelli?
Yes.
Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
When the chair votes yes, the meeting is adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye.